So I want to thank you all for coming and welcome you. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Filpatos and I'm the Executive Director of Student Services. And I am fortunate enough to be able to work with our Health Department and our Health Office to make sure that we are safe as we return to in-person learning. So the format today is a town hall. We had a really great experience with our first town hall. And we found that we were having more staff questions than family questions. So we want to make sure that we give our staff, our Team PPSD family enough time to ask their questions. So this is just for you. There's no community members on this Zoom link. And I appreciate all of you that sent in questions. We had tons of questions and we sorted them out and took out any repeats and really kind of took out some opinions that were included in the questions. Because the goal of today is to take the questions and get them to the experts. And then we have our Ms. King is going to be recording all of this. So a transcript can then be provided to you via Postmaster. So if you miss something, don't worry. This is being recorded and we will be giving you a transcript. So in order to start, I'd like to introduce Dr. Nazir and read a brief his bio. So Dr. Nazir is the Health Officer for Plainfield Health Department, where he assures the delivery of comprehensive public health services to a diverse community in the city of Plainfield. He has worked in the field of public health for over 15 years at various public health departments in the state of New Jersey. As Chief Executive Officer of the Health Department, he plans, manages, and oversees various public health programs, including communicable diseases, surveillance and investigation, public health, nursing, health education, environmental health, rabies control, maternal-child health, WIC, vital statistics, child-led prevention, health promotion, disease prevention, public health emergency preparedness, and public health planning and administration. He's worked as an Assistant Director in Global Disease Management and Clinical Outcomes of New Jersey for disease management. And he's introduced therapeutic cost-saving alternative drugs to help keep drug benefit affordable and sustainable. So Dr. Nazir comes to us with many years of experience in public health. And we, in Plainfield Public Schools, we are so grateful for his daily help to us. We call him with our questions and he's always there to answer. So welcome, Dr. Nazir. Make sure I can hear you. Can you hear me, Dr. Nazir? Okay, I can't. Okay. Dr. Nazir, if you could unmute, I don't, I'm having a hard time. Let me see. Nick did say he unmuted you. So you shouldn't be on mute, but I'm not hearing you if you're talking. Okay. Some people are texting me. I'm not that good at multitasking. Let's see. So somebody says they see him, which is great. I don't. Oh, there he is. I see him on page four. He's on page four. Dr. Nazir, great, great. Hi, he's waving. He's got a blue shirt on at the time. Now you're muted again, Dr. Nazir. If you, let's see if you unmute, if we can hear you. Okay, you want to try talking? You look like you're unmuted. Nope, still muted. I unmuted you. Oh, I hear you, I hear you.
Oh, you can hear me, yes.
Very good, very good. Welcome, Dr. Nazir. Thank you for joining us.
Sure, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. First of all, I'm sorry for technical issue. We lost about 11 minutes. And I will, and nice, thank you for your nice introduction.
I hope I got it right. If I did, if you need to correct anything, now's a good time.
That is fine. Let's move forward.
Let's move forward.
You want to start with a question? Or you want me to share something about the updated data? Whatever you like to me to.
I'm gonna, because we had a lot of our, everyone on this call, you know, sent in some questions. So we've sorted them out. And I have the majority of questions are for you. But there were some questions for our Ms. Dyson, our Mr. Sutton, Mr. Williams, and Ms. Jones. That's kind of our team, our COVID team. So to give you a break, I'm gonna ask you, the format's gonna be, I'm gonna ask you about five of their questions and then maybe give one of the other panelists a question and then go back to you. So you don't have to talk the entire time.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, so we'll start off. Number one, what do, what if you do not have health insurance? Can you still get the vaccine?
Yes, you will get the vaccine. Insurance is not required. It is paid by the federal government. Everybody is entitled to get free vaccine.
Now, this question might have come in before last week. Last week, as you know, we were able to secure 600, we submitted 634 names of Plainfield staff to the Union County Health Department and Plainfield Health Department for assistance with appointments. But it says, one of the questions our staff has is, will the Department of Health have additional appointments to help make sure everyone gets the vaccine?
We are trying our best because of shortage of supply and a lot of demands. We are not able to get everybody vaccinated, but we are working with the county, state. As soon as we get more supply, we will open up more slots. But I know we are trying our best, whatever the resource we have. I know everybody want to get vaccine. Even personally, I did not got my vaccine. I want my teacher or my other first responder gets their vaccine first. Because they are more priority than my family. That is my, my son is EMT. He got the vaccine because he's dealing with the COVID situation. Because we don't have a lot of supply. The way the sound from the federal government and from the state government look like we will get more supply within next weeks, then we can open up more slots. And we will be able to accommodate more people.
Excellent. So once somebody gets the second shot, when will they have immunity?
That is, we are also learning. Science, public health community is also learning. It is depend on person to person. This is news, virus, new vaccine, and it is, people develop antibodies in the body. Antibodies in the body about first after, couple of days after first dose, but they develop after second dose. It, different people, different research say within three to four week or two to three weeks, depend on individual to individual, different reports. You get the antibodies in the, in the body, in the human body, and that protect you from the vaccine, from the virus.
Okay, thank you. For staff who live outside of Union County that have been trying to receive a vaccination, but have been unable to do so due to the limited supply that you just mentioned and the high demand, would it be reasonable to allow those staff members time to get the, at least the first vaccination shot before forcing all staff into the building on March 15th as we continue to defeat the worst global pandemic in 100 years? So there was a little editorializing there. But basically, sort of the same thing you're talking about, the, the timing for, for staff. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that. But like I said, we were able to.
Sure, even the teacher who live out of Plainfield, they are our teacher, they are working with our community. They are part of our community. They spend eight, 10 hour in our community. We will try to accommodate them too. Including not only the Plainfield resident, we will accommodate them too, as soon as we have more supply from the state.
And I believe that goes for out-of-state staff members as well? Because you are a member of this community, right?
That's right. You are a member of this community. You will be eligible. We will, once as soon as we have more supply, it will be for everybody. Because they spend eight hour, 10 hour in our community. And we want to make sure they should be vaccinated.
Thank you, thank you very much. So there's, number five is, I have been having difficulty getting an appointment for my husband, who's not a staff member. This is just a general question, I think, from one of our staff members. What, and we are at high risk. What should we do?
First of all, I understand everybody frustrated for these appointments and because of shortage of vaccine. And I'd recommend them, they just, just register themselves and they can go on the state website. They can go on the county website. And we are also working on our side very hard to get more vaccine. They can go to neighborhood health center, that we have FQHC. They can go on their website, register themselves. As soon as the vaccine will be available, they will get the email, they will get the text message.
Perfect.
We are trying to get more and more slots. But we are working our best, what we have right now.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna toss it to our nurse supervisor, Ms. Dyson, for a couple of in-house questions. Ms. Dyson, if the district gets to a point of revoking 504s, will pregnancy be considered a factor to keep a staff member virtual?
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you for that question. Pregnancy falls under the high risk for COVID. So those 504s will be in place during the pregnancy.
Thank you. And I'm gonna give you three in a row, Ms. Dyson.
Okay. You have to excuse, my pipes are beeping in the back. I don't know if you have our pipes. The heat's coming up.
Will there be disciplinary action if it's found that a student has traveled out of the country and returned without quarantining or reporting that travel?
Well, no, we will not discipline any, any child, but they will not be allowed, if we find out, so that's a two-part question, because you're asking if we don't know about it. So obviously, now we know about it. And no, they will not be allowed to come back to school and they will have to quarantine for 14 days.
Thank you. Dr. Nazir, is there any, if we know of a citizen, let's say my neighbor, I know my neighbor just left the country and she came back and now she's running around. Is there some, is there anything that we're supposed to do if, if people don't follow the rules kind of set forth by, by New Jersey at this time?
But yeah, you can call us. If somebody out of country came back, you know, the neighbor, she, she should be under quarantine, stay home. It is, if somebody is positive, that is isolation, they are mandatory. They are, anybody is exposed, they are also, should be stay under quarantine. But we, you can give us a call to our local health, our health department, my office. We can follow up. Because we, because this is confidential. Maybe that neighbor is already vaccinated. Maybe neighbor is already positive. It's a confidential information, but you can, anybody can give us a call, then we can follow up.
Okay.
Somebody is in violation of quarantine, is in violation of isolation, then we can follow up with that people. But we don't want anybody give us a call, they are angry with the neighbor, and just give us a call. This, because our, our time is very sensitive or very important.
So you're here to support, if, if, if help is needed, you're gonna support us. We appreciate that. So here's kind of a longer question, Dr. Nazir. If I don't feel well for a few days and go to get tested on the third day of not feeling well, and I receive my results two days later that say I'm positive, was I contagious when I first felt sick?
According to CDC guideline, yeah. According to CDC guideline or DOH guideline, person is infectious on the day of they have first symptom. Two days prior that one. Suppose I am feeling sick today and I have headache, whatever symptom, headache, chill, fever, what I have, but I am spreading the germ 24, 48 hours before. I was spreading germ yesterday. I was spreading germ day before yesterday. Wherever I was, everybody who are around me within six feet, more than 15 minute, they are my close contact. They will be under quarantine.
So would I need to notify them? Or would, would someone else notify my close contacts?
Once the positive result, all the state lab or public labs, whoever run the test, they by law, they send the report to the local health department, my office, and state health department. We get the result and then we follow the patient who is positive. Educate them about the disease and ask them if they need any help or what we can do for them. And we, I put them under isolation. And we talk with them where they've been from, like when they start first symptom, two days prior, where they were. Then we find, get the list of that one. In the school system related to, if something positive in the school, we reach the Ms. Dyson, we school public health or the nursing office and superintendent office, administration office. They give us a list where the, where the person was. Then we reach them to put them under quarantine. This is my health department, they do their job. This is their job. And we work very closely with the nursing office. And we support each other, we help each other. Even sometime, we call each other about 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, I know you've been working 24/7 and I know you've had a nice partnership with our very own nurses. We've had five of our nurses helping you and we're very proud of that. And we thank you for that connection because it really, it really helps us be stronger in our community.
I really appreciate the administration superintendent and this nursing office giving us these hands. Because we have a lot, we have short staff, but when I reach the Ms. Dyson and superintendent, they say, no, everything for you, whenever you need. I really appreciate that for all help. And we will be, not on today, they, they want when I call them. When we have a case, they want, they are with us on the, onboard. And now I am, they are also willing to volunteer for the vaccine plan project too. And we are working with them. Even I call the school superintendent, I need a school, high school for vaccination. They say, whenever you need, whatever time you need. This is for the community. I really appreciate that.
We're in this together, that's for sure. And we did appreciate that our nurses got that experience because now they're pretty much expert contact tracers and they're coming back into our buildings knowing exactly what to do per the Health Department. So we do thank you for that. Dr. Nazir, what, what can you say to someone who doesn't believe in vaccinations?
If somebody, there are some folks, they don't believe, they don't, they don't want to vaccine. There are anti-vaccine group. Our job is to educate them. Our job, job is to give them the scientific facts. Our job to give them the data is on the depend, is all, what we had to share, the information, data, or the research is up to them. This is not mandatory, but this is up to them if they want to vaccine. We can educate them, we can, it is not a mandatory act. Like, oh, you must have to have by law. It is education and sharing the data, sharing the information. And it is good for them, for them, for their family member, for their children, for their neighbor, for their community. They should get a vaccine.
Thank you.
Like, my children, all my children are vaccinated for all vaccine. I am vaccinated for all vaccine except COVID vaccine because I'm not getting, because I want to give this vaccine to somebody else who is more needed.
So that, thank you, that was very helpful. I'm gonna toss it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Williams, so he can handle some kind of in-house questions. We have a few. Mr. Williams, how will the teachers instruct with students that remain remote and students that are hybrid?
So just as we do now currently with the students who have been coming in since September, you know, you will still be teaching virtually like you do now. The only difference is you'll have some students in front of you. But that will allow, however, for those students who may, may be struggling, for you to be able to provide some in-person support. But as of right now, it'll continue as you've been doing.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. What about, what teachers are going to be moving around from classroom to classroom?
So I think it's based on schedule and availability in different buildings. But I know in a lot of the elementary schools, the specialist teachers move around and they'll continue to do so.
Thank you. One more for you, then we'll switch back over. Are teachers' health and fears taking a top priority? And if they want to, will teachers be given an option to be a virtual teacher?
No, the only thing that will give you the option of being a virtual teacher is if you request a 504 and we can accommodate you based on what your needs are in order to come in the building.
Thank you. And that's a nice segue for Ms. Dyson to respond about some 504 questions. Ms. Dyson, will treating specialists be personally consulted prior to changing the status of a 504 for their patient?
Well, our, our school physician has approved the 504s, which meet the criteria under the CDC guideline. So I'm not really clear what someone means by a specialist. That would be on an individual basis if needed.
So how are you, how are you going to be addressing people with current 504 plans?
That will be done on an individual basis.
And is, where's Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones, maybe you could jump in from our HR department about some 504 questions. Are you going to be, and this is an HR question, are you going to be honoring my 504 plan if I do not take the vaccine?
Each 504 will be evaluated on an individual basis, as, as you had mentioned. The district is encouraging everyone to take the vaccine. So everyone, it's encouraging everyone to take the vaccine, but you will be receiving, everyone with an existing 504 will be receiving a phone call from central office to discuss their 504 and then what the next steps are.
Thank you. As of right now, is the district making me take the vaccine?
So again, the district is encouraging all employees to take the vaccine. Obviously, everyone is in a different place and in a different space with taking the vaccine. Some individuals are okay with taking it. Some individuals are waiting until a little later. Some individuals have just flat out said no. But again, we encourage, the district's position is that everyone, we would like for everyone to be vaccinated.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Nazir, I have a heavy, a heavy question about numbers for you. So here we go. I noticed that our daily COVID count in New Jersey is still averaging around 3,387 cases per day as of March 4th. Our school district was closed down in November after only being open for one week due to similar averages in the, in the community. Do you think returning to the classroom for students on April 12th could cause a problem with the spread of the virus in our community and within our state?
Okay, now, it is, the question, I can share some number to make the, this is our local numbers. And we are getting average about, if I can make it, about 12 cases from last couple of weeks. Right now, starting March 2020, we have 5,394 cases so far.
In Plainfield?
In Plainfield. And we have 150 deaths over here so far in Plainfield. And in the school age children, we have about, from zero to 19-year-old, we have about 641 cases out of 5,394. And our, we are in the level of our number of cases are about average is 12 cases, 13 cases a day. That as I know, it can change tomorrow, it was a little higher earlier. But they are in a very low number in the community, I know. Whatever we have in the community, the children and teacher are part of the community, that will show over there, same thing. But our children, school age, we have about 641 cases as of today. And no death in the child and school age children, no death, zero. And number, on the base of current disinformation, what we have, I can say if with the following, the all CDC, Department of Education, Department of Health guideline, and the school, if everybody follow the guideline, we are safe. You can get this virus while you are shopping in the shop, right, to Walmart, viruses in the community. You can get this virus in the pharmacy. You can get the virus from, in the house, from the neighborhood. Somebody touched something and you touched that one. The virus is in the community. We had to follow the standard protocol. Keep the social distance, mask, hand washing, sanitize. If you are sick, stay home, do not come to work. That's basic protocols to keep ourselves safe or our school safe.
Thank you. And I'm gonna follow up with a question. You talked about risk category. I don't know where, I think I just lost Dr. Nazir.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, very good. So how is risk category determined? And has Plainfield ever been in the red risk category?
And the red risk category is they call green, orange, red statewide. And we were there sometime, we were out of that one. And that is, I know we are not in red categories, if I can say. And because there are a lot of factors over there to make it red, make it yellow, make it orange and green. But right now, we are not in red category. We were, that's, we were, we've been, go through. We were up, then we don't, went up and down. But sometime we are high, we are not completely high red level, but it was on the initial state of the red. Then we come back orange, then go back, and then orange, then that is the way it is going on.
Yes, so the CDC tied a lot of their, their quarantine timelines and their openings, openings to these colors. So we, we, how can we find out what color Plainfield is?
This is, the CDC are giving us a guideline for the school. And this is, color is only one factor, by the way. Color is not 100% one, only one factor when we say, oh, school is safe or the community is safe or Plainfield County is safe. There are number of people, incoming cases, positive cases, positivity rate, how many people are getting positive, how many people are getting hospitalized, how many people are dying. There's so many factors to make a color coded. This color code is not only factor we had to decide about the school or about the community level.
Thank you, thank you.
As long as we follow the CDC guideline, DOE issued their guideline for the school, as long as we follow the guideline and we are safe in the home, in the school, in the office. I am coming in the office every day, seven days a week from April 2020.
That sort of connects to our next question, which is, would we be raising the risk for school employees to contact COVID-19 by bringing the workers back together on 3/15? So as you know, we're coming, all of our Team PPSD is coming back on March 15th into the building. And you were speaking about how, how they can stay safe in that.
Yes, same thing like my office. We are coming in the, my communicable disease department, other employees, they are coming in the office. We follow the basic protocols. We don't come to follow the mask. Nobody come in the office in the map without mask. We check the temperature who comes in. If somebody is sick, even he has any symptom, headache, tired, fever, or any symptom, little tired, too much tiredness, any abnormal symptom, please do not come to the office. That is a basic, hand washing. That is a basic, hand washing, sanitizer, social distance, face masking. And if they have a barrier over there, whatever kind of face shield barrier or desk barrier, that kind of, as long as we follow the protocols, safety protocols, the basic guideline, we should be fine. And but I know, I don't want to pinpoint, but I know sometimes the employees, they have a lunch party. Sometimes some people have their retirement party, not in the school, outside in the school too. And that caused some problem because we see, employee don't see the whole picture. Being a health department, we know where are the cases are. Sometimes the people don't say something in the job place, but we can get the information. And they have a party somewhere, or holiday parties, Thanksgiving Day party, New Year party. They say, we don't have a party, but once we see there are about 20 people from one location, then the person who organizing the party, he denied it, but everybody else say, we have a party.
Oh, no parties. We're not, I can't wait till we can have a party again, I should say, I love, I can't wait. But I'm gonna actually take what you started and ask Mr. Williams to explain about, a little bit about the attestation. So, because we had some attestation questions. And what you were talking about was really attesting to your health. So, Mr. Williams, why do I have to attest on the app when I can attest when I enter the building?
I think we could safely say that everyone has a home thermometer. We prefer you not to even leave your house if you have a fever. However, for accountability, that's the only way we really can track if folks are really attesting. I know we have the little sign there and by the mere mention of you swiping in, that would say you're answering no, but we can't take that risk. So you must do that. The nurses will be calling those who haven't attested. And also, there's a feature that we're activating where if you don't attest, it will contact us and will come get you.
Thank you.
And Liz, I want to add one thing. Please, please, I request all the staff member, if you are sick, please do not come to the office. Don't take any fever reducing medicine, don't suppress anything. If you are sick, please do not come to the office because you are, you can spread the sickness. Because we don't, sometime people are little feeling not, they are tired or some symptom, mild symptom, please do not come to the office. That for your safety, for kid's safety, for staff's safety.
Thank you. We, we have been echoing that cry. And maybe Ms. Jones, if you could jump in and answer the question. If I, if I have to, if I can't come in because I'm feeling a little sick, what do I do? Do I report a sick day? What if I have COVID?
Yes, so if you are feeling sick, as everyone has said, please do not come in. Put in absence manage, a sick day for absence management. Should your illness term result in a positive COVID designation, then your absence will be changed from a sick day to a COVID day or COVID days.
So we still have COVID days for staff?
Yes, so COVID days will remain for staff based on COVID quarantine or a COVID illness, obviously, if you're working and you happen to be asymptomatic, what have you. But yes, but only for, COVID days are for COVID days. If you have to quarantine, yes, you will be allowed COVID days.
Thank you, okay. So, Dr. Nazir, we're returning on April 12th with our students, and that follows our spring break. So one employee asks, would you recommend that we wait an additional seven to 14 days after our spring break to reopen due to the fact that many of our families travel and visit other family members over spring break?
We should not travel, by the way. We should not have a party. And we should avoid unnecessary travel, unnecessary gathering. We ask Christmas time, I know it is hard for the families, hard for the kids to stay away for a long time. This is very unusual situation. We should avoid unnecessary travel, wait for a couple of more months, then we have more people vaccinated, more people will be, have immunity, then it will be safe to visit each other. That is my, do not, our, do a party, do not go unnecessary traveling. We discourage that one. And that will help us to control the virus in the community. That is the basic message we want to give. On the recommendation, we are giving on the base of the information what we have right now. At this moment, my recommendation, being a health officer, can change on the base of the information what I have. As of this moment, we work with administration, we share our data, we share our numbers to make them comfortable, whatever they have to decide.
Okay, thank you. Let's ask Nurse Dyson some questions. Nurse Dyson, how many district COVID cases have been reported in the last three weeks?
I think there's been about, if you go back three weeks, 10 or 11. But they have all come from, from outside. I think there, I have no workplace transmissions.
And, and this question is not on my paper, but sometimes people wonder why they haven't been notified if they know someone in their building has, is, is COVID positive. So can you just explain when we, when we're notifying individuals of COVID?
Sure, sure. So contact tracing begins the minute I get the phone call, even if it's on a weekend at night, after hours, and I ask the person, who are their close contacts? Okay, so it is the individual's person's responsibility to identify their close contacts and even go back two days prior. So one thing I want to stress, this is why it's so important for everyone to follow the regulations and stay six feet away and, and stay, not be in close contact for 15 minutes or more. It's very difficult for people to remember. People have my phone number. I'll say, if you think of anyone else, call me. I do get calls from people while I was in close contact, while I was in close contact. I do not give out anybody's information. If some people choose to give their friends, their colleagues the information, but I will go back and ask that person, were you in close contact with that person? Were you in close contact with that person? And then I can move forward because it's hard to remember two days back who you had close contact with. But just keep in mind, I have to maintain confidentiality of the individual is, is very important. And I do go back and I also tell people, if you think of anyone, please let me know. So we do sometimes have cases where the building was closed. Okay, we've had a lot of snow days. So that person was not in the building. All right, so we may not need to contact you if that is the case, if the person has not been in the building. We also have, I'm sorry, we also have cases where people may convert at home. So say if there's COVID within a household and someone, one was out because they were in close contact in their home, and now they call me and say, I converted. Okay, they haven't been in the building in 10 days. So that doesn't, that doesn't quantify as them being in the building, so you would not be notified.
Thank you, thank you. You actually, and some of the questions, you know, repeat, but you did actually say, are, are the teach, this is another question, are the teachers and staff told right away when another teacher or staff member is diagnosed? And I just wanted to kind of follow up on what you said because we really appreciate our PEA and pass a leadership for, for working in conjunction with us. We like to, as soon as we know, I call Keith and, and he helps to explain, you know, if, for his members. So this, this relationship, and then as soon as you know, you, we start the letter process. There's about 15 steps that we follow, and we follow them immediately. So how, how soon do you know? I'm gonna tell everyone on this call, Nurse Dyson makes it a priority to notify close contacts immediately. That is her priority. And then as soon as possible, we notify the, the larger building. And, you know, when, when she says she's on the weekends, all Saturday, Sunday, up until 10 o'clock at night, like Dr. Nazir said, this is not really a nine to five conversation. It kind of goes into every part of the day. So we're, we're grateful for, for Ms. Dyson's efforts and for PEA for always picking up the phone too when we call about that as well. So let's jump back to Dr. Nazir. We are really doing great. We, I, I, I'm trying to get through all of our in, our typed up questions so that in case we have a few minutes for, for, I see Mr. Kilarza has his hand raised. Let's see. So this is a question, Dr. Nazir. So it says, is it, if it's safe to have 200 students in a building plus 200 staff members in a building, why aren't we having this meeting in a building?
I will come to in the building to further meeting. As long as everybody is following the mask, social distance, I will not hesitate to come in the building. As long as everybody follow the guideline, everybody follow the protocols, they should not be, we, I will, I have no problem because only for the convenience, we have this meeting. Otherwise, if you have physical meeting, sure, I will come as long as everybody will follow the protocol and guideline.
So the, one of the great things about this meeting is we actually have 339 participants. Is it, is there still a limit on the number of individuals that can gather, even in like our auditorium, let's say? What's, what capacity can groups gather?
Yeah, that will be on the, if there is, for example, if they are doing some activity in the gym and they had to follow the social distance, depend on the, how big gym is that. And I cannot say, oh, you had to put 100 people. If the gym is small, they cannot keep the social distance. It should be on the coach, responsibility of the coach or administrator, how many people they can come within the guideline. We should not overcrowd, we should not try to abide the guideline. As long as the gym is too big, then you can put more people within the guideline.
Okay, thank you very much. And this is a very specific question. It says, how many variant cases in New Jersey, B.1.1.7 variant from South Africa are there?
That is a good question I was trying. I think that in the morning, we have a conf, every morning, we have a conference call with the State Health Department. If I remember exactly, we have 137 so far cases for different variant. That can be UK variant, that can be Brazil variant, that can be New York variant, that can be South African variant, all this one. So far, we have in the whole state. And that is, we have 137 in only Jersey state right now. But regardless, whatever the variant is, the basically is the COVID-19 virus. We had to go to follow the public health basics, face mask, social distance, hand washing, sanitizer. If you are sick, don't come to work. If you are sick, don't come to school. The children should follow the same guideline protocol. If whatever the variant is, we had to follow the basic public health rules.
Thank you, thank you. I, I want to, we do have five questions, actually four, for our Mr. Sutton. And I'm not able to see him with the 337 people. Do we have Mr. Sutton on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Sutton. I certainly did not mean to, I'm not calling you. And also, I apologize, people are texting me right now. I'm not able to multitask like that. So I'm not, I know Keith texts, I can't, I don't know what anyone's saying to me. All right, so Mr. Sutton, has every building heating and air conditioning system been recently upgraded to provide the clearest, the cleanest air quality?
All schools have it by Carl Environmental, our district environmental, environmental company. POCIA has recently sent the letter to Dr. Mitchell approving our school district for operation in terms of indoor air quality as well as proper operation of our HVAC systems. So we're totally compliant.
Thank you. And that actually goes with the next question, which says, which third-party inspections will be done to ensure that all buildings are in compliance with the CDC COVID-19 guidelines? And you, you said, named somebody a second ago.
Carl Environmental Consultant, I'm in contact with them quite often, as well as they are in district quite often. We are working very closely during a pandemic to best serve our district. Additionally, respective city, county, and state agencies also governing this whole process in terms of making sure that our school district meets its proper specifications in terms of mitigation of the pandemic. So we, from all levels, we, we are constantly in contact.
And I know that's the other person who always picks up the phone is our Mr. Sutton, and we appreciate everything you do. And I know the next question, some people, I guess, are wanting more information about cleaning and maintenance routines, and, and they're wondering if this will be posted in the building?
Well, it won't be posted in buildings. I don't know if any school actually posts in buildings. But what we will do is constantly communicate as needed and as things develop, maybe by postmaster. But we have done it previously by, you know, our most recent P S, postmaster. And, and at times, we may actually reach out by way of our administrators, but that's at the discretion of our wonderful superintendent and the upper administration team.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. One more thing, people are very concerned about the bathrooms. And I know you have a great feature I'd like you to share. But the question here is also, how often and how thoroughly will bathrooms be sanitized once the children return?
Okay, bathrooms, all custodial staff has been trained by Attra Janitorial Services. We will continue to do the training. And administrators previously was sent the checklist, not only for bathrooms, but for, for bathrooms as well as classrooms and the overall office space as well as what's expected of our custodial team. Bathrooms are cleaned hourly. We also have went to the limits of putting in bathroom alert, bathroom alert. One of the things I'm very proud of is that our custodial team and the school district is, from what I'm told, is the only school district in the state of New Jersey that actually, actually have this type of feature. So bathrooms are cleaned hourly. It's the expectation if there's any issues. Outside of, you know, touch points are clean every two hours, bathrooms are cleaned hourly. If you're not getting the service that you need, the quickest and most responsive way is to send that text over to us, myself, the facilities and grounds team, as well as your head custodian gets it instantaneously, someone gets on it. So what happens is if, if by the time that you text it, within 10 minutes that you do not, you do not get your proper service, if that's the case, it's automatically resent to us. So our goal, like I've said to you, to everyone previously, is to improve our quality of service.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sutton. We really appreciate everything you've done. And we, I want to thank all the panelists. We have a few minutes left, we have about eight minutes. And, and I would like to ask the people asking questions if they could be directed to Dr. Nazir because we do. because we do have access to Mr. Sutton, Mr. Williams, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Dyson at all times. Where our doors are always open, our phone numbers, our phones are always on. But Dr. Nazir is our special guest, so um, if, Nick, if you could um, bring over, hopefully we can get a couple of good questions in from, from the audience. Three participants have raised their hand, so. Uh, does that mean Keith's first? I see Keith. Keith, I unmuted you, I think.
Uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, good a- good afternoon, I just wanted to make one correction, but also ask Dr. Nazir um, a question as it relates to the CDC guidelines, and the one correction is, um, it was stated that we have not had any workplace transmission within the past two weeks, and we actually have, that notice went out two weeks ago. Um, additionally, Dr. Nazir, my question is, which guidelines uh, should the district strictly follow as it relates to CDC and which should just be taken as suggestions?
Great question. Where's Dr. Nazir? Do we still see him? Cause I don't.
There he is.
Okay, good. Dr. Nazir, did you hear um, Mr. Constance's question um, about the CDC, which should be taken um, as Keith said it better. Did we lose him?
No, he's there, so I'm just gonna interject real quick while he unmutes to Mr. Constance, I just want to apologize, there was one workplace transmission. I didn't have the data right in front of me, so I was going off the top of my head. There was one workplace transmission, so that is a correction.
Keith keeps us on our toes, thank you.
Yes, he does.
Oh, there's Dr. Nazir, um, and I'm gonna ask him to unmute, for some reason, he seems to be muted, Nick, and he, and even, I, okay, yeah. Good, good, alright.
I say, I'm trying to unmute. Uh, the CDC guideline is a recommendation and uh, and then we have to follow, the CDC gave the guideline and the federal level. Then we make the guideline, state health department make a guideline, state health department. And then we work with the DOE, Department of Education, and they have their guideline for the school system too. This is all recommendation for the school system to follow.
Thank you, thank you.
And they're almost same, but they're almost same, but uh, we can do on more stricter in state level, or we can make it more stricter in the local level too, if needed.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Keith, should I go to, to Mr. Galarza? I feel like he had his hand up for a long time. Or you got anything else? Okay. Okay, I, we missed that, what's that?
Uh, just the question of, because it says recommendation, and there are times when it's said that these are just recommendations. So at what point i- is it specific to say, we have to follow what's in black and white? Because you just said it's all recommendations, but is there anywhere where we have to follow in black and white? So if, if it says that in the guidelines or in the booklet or in the handout, and I'm trying to hold the district to that, but then it may be said, well, that's just a recommendation that doesn't necessarily have to, or a suggestion that doesn't necessarily have to be in place?
Uh, this is depend on the specific situation, specific uh, incidents, then we can follow the, uh, these are the requirement, like generally in the COVID nineteen, this is the recommendation for the, everybody should wear mask, staff and a student, unless, this is the not medically not fit for that person. If doctor say, no, he's not, he should not have a mask, then it's a different situation. And then that is our to protect each other. And uh, in case of there is a, I, somebody positive, I can make a specification, oh, he has to stay out of the office or out of the school for ten days. That is the guy, guideline, that is restrict following, we are gone, following the guideline. If somebody is exposed, fourteen days, uh, they have to stay home, that is the guideline, but we follow strictly over there. And sanitizer, yes, we had to available per hand sanitizer. The guideline is change a lot of time, almost daily basis, I can say. If for the exact situation, exact incidents, you can call us, uh, look at my office, and we can guide you specifically what is changing. Because sometime CDC change, but state health department did not change yet. They have a little different guideline. That's why, it is a little confusing, people use CDC guideline, then state guideline is different. And we can help you to explain you, to educate you, what are the current guidelines, the situation recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Nazir, I'm gonna jump over to Mr. Galarza, he's been so patient. Hi, Mr. Galarza.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my question is uh, specifically for people who are in five oh four plans. And as they're being uh, revised or looked at, uh, again, my question is, uh, can uh, a recommendation made by a specialist uh, revoke a five, be, be, uh, the recommendation made by a specialist be revoked by uh, the head lead nurse or a general practitioner, a, 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 a doctor of, of general uh, medicine?
So um, five oh four plan questions are not, not exactly, we're not directing them towards Ms. Dr. Nazir, they actually come out, the five oh fours actually come out of accommodations that, that district can reasonably make, and it comes out of our HR department. So um, that is a question, we, we did have that question a little bit earlier, and each five oh four plan will be um, addressed on an individual basis. And so I just want to make sure that what, what we can do is follow up with you, uh, in that specific question from the district level, and I want to jump over because I have a few other question, hands for, in case I can get something for Dr. Nazir, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I see, um, Nick, I, should I just go? Cause I know, I see Anthony, Jason Anderson. Who do, who's next? Anthony, Dr. Jenkins?
Hi, um, and you know, as it relates to the students returning, you know, we, we, we're tasked to uh, try to estimate what the maximum room capacity is. Um, and, and we want to be clear, are we talking about all the people in the room or just students themselves? We have some rooms with multiple adults in them. And then you talk about in some cases usable space, like, you know, you have a, 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 you know, you say your square footage is this, but you got built in lockers. Um, and they're really not usable, so they really don't count for spaces, we're gonna not be using that space for place students, so we just want to be clear, so we can keep everybody safe, students, staff. Keep the district out of liability, because I love my district, don't yell at me, Ben.
No, Dr. Jenkins and I were pondering this exact question yesterday, and I'm not sure if this is Dr. Nazir's area of expertise, what Dr. Jenkins is referring to is the number of children that can be in a room. Um, we, there's a calculation in the New Jersey Department of Education Road Back Manual that um, kind of gives you an idea of the radius needed to keep kids six feet apart. Um, and in, there really is not a lot of follow-up on that information in the CDC um, recommendation, so I don't know. But basically, he's asking about social distancing and how, um, how we can set up our classrooms, um, you know, to best accomplish that and, and what are the limits?
Yeah, and, and listen, as you say, the DOE, New Jersey DOE, they have very nice guideline about that one too. The basic principle is this, as the principal mentioned, we want to make sure everybody's safe and healthy. Number of bodies, number of people, children, teacher, student, assistant, all will be counted, you know, to make sure these are, uh, number of people are within social distance, proper face masking, and they have a desk, proper distance, that is, they have to follow the guideline. We can give the idea, this is the basic principle, has to be social distance, masking, ventilation, all this one. And they can work with the administration and uh, staff with, set up each room, I cannot say, oh, this room should have ten people, this room should have twenty people, I can, I don't know. That is details should be done by the administration.
Okay, alright, thank you, this is, it is a hard question. So I just want to tell, you know, everybody, um, we do have several people with their hands raised, I'm gonna go with Mr. Anderson, and that's gonna be the end. We did promise Dr. Nazir an hour. So um, there are a few other people who we're not going to get to, please feel free to call me directly. Um, and I can make sure we can get your, your question answered. Um, or any of the other uh, panelists can do that as well. So Mr. Anderson, you're gonna take us home with the last question.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Nazir, my question is kind of specific. Um, some people that carry EpiPens have been asked to, or um, warned to avoid certain vaccine, vaccines. Is there any way to guarantee that you get a certain vaccine? Like Johnson and Johnson as opposed to Pfizer?
Yeah, I will recommend them, they should talk with their healthcare provider to discuss because they know their doctor know their conditions to recommend them for EpiPen. And they should discuss with the healthcare provider which vaccine is good for which person.
Yeah, but my question is, is it any way that you can, like, when you sign up, is there any way to guarantee which one that place will have? Cause I don't want to sign up and then go and they have, only have Pfizer, and I've been recommended not to take Pfizer.
Yes, uh, you can call them or ask them. I, I know this, if I remember the system for appointment, it does not give the option to the community. You can choose Pfizer, you can choose Moderna, you can choose Johnson and Johnson, I don't think so they give the option.
Right.
And majority of the community vaccination is generally, I'm saying, is Moderna. The Pfizer one is coming to the hospital healthcare services because they have a capacity to handle that one. And uh, community, the Johnson and Johnson will be available for the mostly for the community too. But you can make a phone call to ask them, after your booking, make sure, show your doctor recommend me for this one, and then you can ask them if they have that vaccine. But I don't think so, I know you can confirm before you go over there. Uh, while, not before, while you're making the appointment in the computer system. Hopefully, within a couple of weeks, we know this kind of situation are coming from the community. Everybody is not eligible for all vaccine. It, option will be available very soon, I don't know how soon, but that will be available for the community, they can choose which one they want.
Is, is it true that the um, Johnson and Johnson is at the pharmacies? Or did I just?
Yes, it will be all will, um, um, the Moderna and Johnson and Johnson will be available to the pharmacy, to the health center, to the uh, health department, and other mega sites, county sites, that will be available over there too, but it's coming to pharmacies too. Uh, that will be available, I know Walgreens, CVS, now very, I think they're lining up Wal- Walmart, ShopRite, and other our pharmacies too, very soon, they will be online too.
Well, Dr. Nazir, thank you so much, you, you have been um, a very gracious guest and taken all of our questions, and we really appreciate you. And um, for everyone else on the call, um, this was our second town hall, we'd like to do a few more. Um, we've had a suggestion that we would do um, something about learning loss. Um, if you have a suggestion of a topic that you would like us to explore in the town hall format, please let us know. Um, if anyone has a question for Dr. Nazir that they weren't able to get out, please email it to me or call me with it, and I will make sure to follow up with him um, to get you that answer. Uh, Nurse Dyson is always available, and um, we thank, we thank her so much for her diligence. Thank you, Mr. Sutton, Mr. Williams, Ms. Jones, and um, really, thank you so much, Dr. Nazir, we really appreciate your time.
You can reach me anytime, and I, if you have a Ms. Dyson, the staff can reach them. I am here to help, I am here to support, I am here to guide. We are here together, we want to make sure our school are safe, our community is safe, we are here working together as a one team.
Perfect, we appreciate that, thank you so much. Have a great afternoon, everybody, until next town hall, we'll see you then.
Thank you.